Morning, everyone. We'll bring this meeting to order for October 14th, regular council meeting. Next on the agenda is approve of the agenda.
Resolved that the agenda for the October 14th, 2025 County Council Meeting be approved as presented.
Move your secondor, please. Counselor Hans, Counselor Cookett. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have introductions, recognition, memorials. Do not believe we have any this morning. Next is adoption of minutes.
Resolved that the minutes and closed session minutes of the meeting held on September 23rd, 2025 be adopted.
Move your secondor, please. Counselor Widner, Counselor Latham. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, do we have any disclosure of community interests, general nature thereof? Not seeing any. Next down is item six. Presentations, petitions, and delegations, 6.1. We have Deanna Huggett, Executive Director, Elgin Ontario Health Team, with the presentation for care close to the home. Welcome, Deanna. Come on up to the podium.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me here today. As mentioned, my name is Deanna Huggett. I have the pleasure of serving as the Executive Director of the Elgin Ontario Health Team. And for those that are less aware, the Elgin Ontario Health Team is not an organization. It's a collaborative network of community partners, including our health partners, social service partners, municipal partners. It includes organizational representatives as well as clinical representatives and community members, all working together to try to improve health and wellbeing in Elgin. And that includes making care more accessible, more connected, and more equitable across the region. Very grateful to be here, very grateful to have the support of our municipal partners. Blaine Parkin does sit on our coordinating council, our leadership board for the Elgin Ontario Health Team, and so grateful for the opportunity to come here and chat with you today. Next slide, please. So, what? Whoops. Let's go back one slide, sorry. And, okay. And sorry, yes, forward. And why am I here today? Well, there is a challenge across the community, and many of you will likely know about the challenge that is lack of access to primary care. This is not only a challenge in Elgin, it's a challenge across the province and also across the country. In Elgin, right now, we have about 9,000 people who do not have access to a family physician or primary care nurse practitioner. That means that they don't have that critical connection point into the health system. Oftentimes, the family physician is seen as the key to being able to connect into the health system, and many are without that opportunity. We also know that there are a whole bunch of folks in our community, more than 20,000 people within our community, that don't have access to a family physician or primary care nurse practitioner that practices in Elgin. So that might be by choice. It might be, for example, that they live in London or work in London, and they want to be connected to care close to work, where they spend, you know, their working hours. But for many, it's a challenge in the sense that maybe they've moved here. They've moved because of the great opportunities that have presented themselves in Elgin and the growing communities, and they've had to retain a family physician outside of Elgin. So maybe they've moved from Hamilton or Sudbury, their family physician still works in Hamilton or Sudbury, and they are trying to access care close to home. And they don't have the ability to do that. We also know that less than half of our physicians practice in team-based models. And we know by evidence that access to team-based care actually is, proves to have, offer the best outcomes and also the best experiences in terms of, for individuals accessing care, but also for people working within the care system. I like to refer to this as the haves, the have-nots, and the have-have-nots. So I am blessed to have access to team-based care. I am able to contact my team-based care office if I have an issue after hours and be connected throughout the night to our family physician officer or a resident to have access to team-based care. Many do not have access. And when they don't have access, where do they have to go? They have to go to our local emergency department. As great as it is, it's not necessarily the right place for them to be. They have to go and access care far away, or delay care, or maybe they don't even access care because of the challenges. And that risks further impacting their outcomes because they are not getting access to preventative care or the ongoing continuous care that they need. And so this does affect the whole system and certainly the wellbeing of our communities. Next slide, please. So why now? Why are we talking about primary care right now? The impact is quite substantial across the region and across the province. We also know that the government has actually made a very big commitment. They have released the commitment that by 2029, every resident in Ontario will have access to team-based primary care. And they have tasked Ontario Health Teams and our local primary care networks with developing a plan to make that happen. And that's what we are doing right now. And in addition to developing that plan and making that commitment on how we're going to, how we're going to reach this goal, there is the single largest investment in primary care that has been made in decades, and that's $2.1 billion on the table right now from the provincial government for us to try to figure out how to make this a reality in our local community. Next slide, please. And so to figure this out, to build this local plan, to connect everyone to team-based care locally, we are first building a vision. What is our long-term vision for what we want this to look like, and how are we going to take some steps to get there? And over the last couple of years, and certainly very intensively over the last few months, we have been building a local vision called a neighborhood health home model. And that's what I'd like to chat with you a little bit about today. And so that neighborhood health home model, as I said, is built on lots of engagement. It's also built on the foundations of strength that exist already within our community. We have a great hospital. We have great community health centers in West Elgin and also in St. Thomas. We have fabulous family health team, one in St. Thomas and one in East Elgin. Lots of things that we can build on collectively. The idea of the neighborhood health home really is quite simple. Everyone in Elgin should have access to team-based care close to home. And what does this look like? We are proposing three neighborhoods: a west neighborhood, an east neighborhood, and a central neighborhood, all connected through a hub-and-spoke model. The central hub and the east and west spoke sites will leverage our existing team-based care. West Elgin, as we mentioned, the West Elgin CHC, East Elgin, the East Elgin Family Health Team, and a connecting point between our central community health center and the Elgin Community Health Hub. Trying to offer everyone in Elgin team-based care within a 30-minute drive. And for that, for some, that's no change. They already have access to that, but for many, that's quite a significant change. We are also off proposing satellite sites, and these would be placed strategically in underserved areas. So for example, right now, there is a satellite site at the inn, our local shelter. There's another satellite site at Social Services. Supports go there. Primary care already goes there a little bit each week to offer care where people are going. For some of these hard-to-reach and, from some of these harder-to-reach populations. We're also proposing an expansion of mobile outreach services. The Central Community Health Center has had a mobile unit that's gone to Elmer one day a week for the last number of years. Been extremely successful in reaching some of the population, for example, of seasonal workers and others who don't have access to care. It has, that mobile unit has otherwise been sitting in a storage unit for six days a week. We do have the opportunity right now, there's an immediate expansion happening to three days per week for that mobile unit in a couple of additional areas, and we are proposing a further expansion of that. In addition, from a mobile perspective, we have community paramedicine. That has been a newer program in the last few years, and certainly an opportunity to connect to folks in their homes who are, who have difficulty getting out, and how do we leverage those services a little bit more? In this model, all individuals will be able to access team-based care within their neighborhood hub or spoke. And so what does this look like? This would look like, regardless of whether they are connected to a family physician who lives in Sudbury or in Hamilton, they would have access to team-based care through the central hub or those two spoke sites in west or east Elgin. It also means that any of the family physician nurse practitioners practicing in Elgin would have the ability to refer to those team-based services. They may not be co-located within each primary care clinic office, but again, within a 30-minute drive, everyone would have access to those team-based services. The other opportunity is that we have the ability to create these hub-and-spoke sites to meet the needs of the, the unique needs of the local communities. So for example, it might be that in the east neighborhood health spoke, one of the critical members of that team is a low German liaison worker. A critical member of that team in east Elgin, maybe not the top priority in west Elgin, we might need something else in west Elgin. So tailoring these hub-and-spoke sites to the, to the, to the unique needs of the neighborhood. The other opportunity we have and we are looking at and have heard is around navigation supports. Each team in the hub-and-spokes would offer a navigation team that helps connect people to services. Right now, a family physician, when they want to make a referral, they spend time trying to contact where they are referring, hoping that they get an answer, hoping they can make a referral, doing the paperwork to get that referral made, and doing also the follow-up to make that happen. That's a lot of hours of a family physician's time that could be spent accessing, providing care. And so this proposed navigation support would be a team that helps to do all of that for the local residents of that neighborhood health home model. The other opportunity we have is around coordinated after-hours care. So how do we offer an opportunity for the care across the region to be coordinated after hours? Offering a central coordination line where people can call, identify what their needs are, and be connected to the local services within their central hub or spoke. We do believe that this would offer actually less, require less hours of after-hours care than some of the physicians are actually offering right now, because we're offering in a coordinated way, but would actually increase access. So how do we work together and rethink things a little bit to coordinate our time together and offer more access to the community? Centralized waiting list. This is an opportunity for us to bring, coordinate our services together. So right now, if someone comes to the region, they spend time contacting every physician's office and trying to get on every list that they can, hoping that someone will be able to add them to their roster. If we can coordinate that, A, it's reduced administrative time, reduced phone calls to every physician's office, and an opportunity for us to do this in a more equitable way to connect people to local services. And finally, the offer of an academic teaching site. So we believe, right now, there isn't an academic teaching site for family medicine in Elgin. We have been in contact with Western, and certainly there's lots of appetite for bringing an academic site to Elgin and thinking how to leverage that academic site within this neighborhood health home model, where they would be able to connect and do rotations in east, central, and west, offering them an opportunity to see the entire community, improving access within the community, and hopefully building a bit of a pipeline for recruitment and retention in the local area as well. Next slide, please. So I'll give you an example of what this might look like for a resident. Let's talk about Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones is 74 years old. He has diabetes. He also has chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, a lung condition where it has difficulty breathing, and a history of falls. He's decided to move to West Lauren because he has family here and he wants to be closer to his family. He contacts that centralized waiting list that I just mentioned, as he needs a local family doctor or primary care nurse practitioner. The team that's there in the west Elgin spoke would complete an intake with Mr. Jones, and they work to connect Mr. Jones to a local family physician or nurse practitioner. Immediately, Mr. Jones is connected with team-based services at that west Elgin spoke. So Mr. Jones has immediate help to manage his diabetes through the diabetes team, and he also is offered a falls prevention program. That immediate access to team-based care also means that Mr. Jones is connected with the telemedicine program, which helps him better manage his chronic obstructive pulmonary disease and teaches him how to manage that, manage that well at home and monitor things at home for him. If Mr. Jones needs after-hours care, he is able to call that west Elgin spoke and be connected to after-hours care, that team-based service within the, within the west Elgin spoke. Next slide, please. So we know that, this means, we know health is very connected to a stronger and healthier community. So it's not just about better care. It really is also an opportunity to continue to make Elgin a place for clinicians to come and work and serve and raise their families. By creating supportive team-based environments for care and an academic teaching site, which offers leadership opportunities and recruitment opportunities, we do want to attract and retain our healthcare professionals, and we see that as a critical link. It also means more local jobs, greater stability for families, and stronger confidence in our local system. And when residents can access care closer to home, they stay healthier, which means they're able to work in a more effective manner, they're able to volunteer more, and they also enjoy an improved family life. So ultimately, the strength of a health system supports a stronger and healthier Elgin. Next slide, please. And what does that mean for us in terms of working together? Municipal leadership is essential in creating the environments to support folks coming to the region, both families coming to region and care providers coming to the region. It's also critical in bringing this neighborhood health home vision to life. Three sort of areas that we talk about: advocating, attracting, and retaining health professionals, and then aligning and co-creating a vision together. So in terms of advocating, we are asking for your help in championing this vision. As I've mentioned, we've had extensive opportunity to connect across the community, and we're building more and more excitement. I was, had the opportunity to be out in Rodney last week and have a chance to connect with some of the folks there about what it might look like for this locally for them. Very excited to have these conversations. This is about providing universal access to team-based primary care, which is not something that, you know, many folks in our community have. We're also asking for letters of support. So I mentioned earlier that there is $2.1 billion on the table. We're in the midst of preparing a very significant funding proposal to be submitted November 14th, and would certainly appreciate your support as we advocate for funds for this community. It's a very competitive process. There are 58 Ontario Health Teams across the province, all planning to submit for these funds, and we are, we feel we're in good shape to provide some support. We had an opportunity to put in a proposal a couple of years ago, which allowed us to create the Elgin Community Health Hub in St. Thomas. That clinic for folks who otherwise don't have access to primary care has, since it opened September last year, provided support to 5,000 people who don't have a family physician or a primary care nurse practitioner. That's a fairly significant investment and something certainly we can, we can leverage. Right now, that model exists in St. Thomas, and that, again, thinking about that hub-and-spoke model is something that we want to move into east and west as well. So that will be something on the docket for us by November 14th. We're also, you know, in terms of advocating is investment in rural connectivity. So in order for this model to work, we do need some of those connection points. Digital infrastructure is one, for example. There are many opportunities for us to connect to more virtual care, to offer services to folks in their homes or in some of these sites. You know, for example, can we offer improved access to virtual care and virtual supports in a neighborhood spoke that might connect to a service in London, for example? And how can we resupport above that? We need that digital infrastructure to do that. In terms of attract, we do want to continue working together. There's been great success with the Elgin-St. Thomas Healthcare Recruitment Partnership, and we feel, for example, that there are opportunities to continue to align with that work and do this in relation to the health home model. So sharing data, for example, looking at where the needs are based on the hub-and-spoke model to try to attract people within that, within that hub-and-spoke model and that vision, future vision for care, to ensure we're supporting things equitably in the community. And also certainly continuing to make Elgin a great place to live and work. And finally, in terms of align, ensuring health considerations, for example, are built into transportation and land use planning aligned with the vision. So if we are looking at trying to connect everyone to team-based care within a 30-minute drive, how do we consider those transportation opportunities to align with that vision and align with the future use of the, of the transportation planning, for example? And the other piece is creating these accessible anchors. So this hub-and-spoke model is critical. We know, for example, the Central Community Health Center and the Elgin Community Health Hub have an opportunity to come together. We want to think about building an academic site. Part of our proposal will be to include an academic site into making this critical hub. We're also in conversations about talking about an ambulatory care center. You know, I had a conversation yesterday, for example, with a neighbor whose child had a little bit of a bike accident and needed stitches and had to go to steg to have those stitches done. Not something that they needed to sit in the emergency department for. If we had after-hours care, supported ambulatory care within the community, that could have easily been something that was navigated outside of the hospital system. So how do we continue to plan and support alignment with this, with this hub-and-spoke model? And last slide, please. And, you know, I think for me, the, this is a vision we are working towards. We're not going to get there overnight, but we'll take gradual steps to do that. We have an opportunity to put in a funding proposal for a certain aspect of this in November. Other pieces we will look at funding for, and also not always about funding, sometimes it's just about thinking differently in how we do things. So we'll be building towards that with your, with your partnership over the next little while. There has been lots of excitement over this. Every time we have had a conversation with folks about this, the model does resonate, and we hope it resonates with you as well. And we'll look forward to continuing the partnership that we've had over the last number of years and moving into the future. So thank you, and look forward to any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Deanna. Great presentation. Thank you for mentoring the Health Recruitment Committee. We've, it's a critical part of what Elgin's done the past little while, and it's, over the past year, about 10 physicians have come to Elgin because of the committee. And the problem is, we're just barely keeping our heads above water, because these are all mainly from retiring physicians, which is, we're trying to increase, not maintain. So it's great to see the provinces finally understanding what we have been pushing for for many years now with the hub-and-spoke model. I can't tell you how many delegations we've had with Minister of Health and got a flat, no. And it's great to see that finally understand the issues that we're dealing with. So I'll open up for questions. Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And Deanna, thank you very much for that update and presentation. The ideal, the hub that you're striving for, that sounds great. That absolutely is, in my mind, the way to go. And I was really curious with the one statistic you had suggesting that less than 50% of Elgin's physicians don't work within the team-based approach. And if the mandate from the province is suggesting that this has to take place by 2029, how are you going to convince these independents to get on board or get?
It's a great question, and part of it is not necessarily just about convincing. It is some of the system barriers that we face in terms of funding models and what's available. And so, for example, there hasn't been an opportunity to increase new teams. There hasn't been an opportunity for some of the new physicians to join additional family health organizations that are already in practice because of challenges around, if you add one more physician to a family health organization, it means you have to increase your after-hours care by 50%, and that's not very appealing, or there's not enough space in a clinic to be able to bring a new physician in. And so part of the conversation is reimagining what that might look like. And so, for example, if we think about the satellite sites that we have been talking about, maybe there's an opportunity, if there's not enough space within a clinic, to incentivize the physicians to spend a day a week out in one of these satellite sites. And so once a week, five physicians each spend a day in a satellite site, and now there is an additional room available within that clinic. So, you know, but certainly we need to identify the right incentives for that to happen. Also on the table right now is a bit of flex in some of those provincial funding models within these proposals to think a little bit differently. So we do have a little bit of a window right now to act quickly and reimagine what we are doing. And part of the other thing is connecting, you know, where we have a vision for very strong access to team-based care, we will have to start small. So in terms of, right now, there's been a number of new physicians that have come into a fee-for-service model, not ideal. They're not connected to team-based supports. I actually have been in contact with a physician based on the networking event that the Elgin-St. Thomas Healthcare Recruitment Partnership had a week and a half ago. I was able to go and connect with some of those physicians and talk about the supports available, and now have a follow-up call set to talk about one of the things around supported intake and attachment. So the Elgin Community Health Hub that we started a year ago is connecting folks in, able to contact them, get them up to date with any blood work, their vaccines, any, look at their medications, and then get them in a place of readiness to be able to immediately connect to a family physician. So rather than the family physician having to do all of that work, they are now able to connect almost immediately to those team-based services and build their rosters more quickly, and also connect to the Elgin Community Health Hub, where there is a pharmacist on hand, a respiratory therapist on hand, group programs, and we're building out that model as well. So some of it is just connecting in and showing the physicians who have never worked in a team-based model, the impact of what those services will be. The proposal that we have right now on the table, it's all about what the province calls attachment. So how many people are you going to attach to a family physician? And they've given very specific numbers about what that, what that looks like. So for example, if you bring in a physiotherapist, I'm a physiotherapist by background, so that, this is near and dear to my heart. If you bring in a physiotherapist into a team-based model, you need to connect an additional 250 people to a family physician. But what we offer there, rather than someone coming in with a sprained ankle and going to see a family physician first, and then going to see a physiotherapist, why do they have to go see that family physician first? A physiotherapist has been trained for three years in orthopedic assessments. A family physician has had the opportunity for a month, depending on their training, to go through that. Physiotherapists can offer them quicker access and also not clog up that family physician's, that family physician's time and ensuring those communication and feedback loops go back. So part of it is showing them what they have available, and also it's a bit of a mindset shift for the public as well. So I think part of what we need to do is a public awareness campaign of what team-based services can offer as well.
Follow-up on that, two comments. One, that's interesting. So it's a mind shift, as you say. It's both from the potential patient perspective, as well as the governing authorities of changing the model of direct care. So that's, that's interesting, and then it's going to be challenging to get there. There was another one, and I think it's implied, but it still is based on every patient being rostered.
The new definition is either rostered to a family physician or a nurse practitioner or a team. And so that is actually a different definition than has come up before. And so these, in terms of beating that 2029 target, we could connect people to the west Elgin spoke or the central hub, even if they're still potentially waiting for a physician. So it is access to team-based care. So there are some nuances within it, but I do think the biggest part, piece of this is what is that connection point to team-based care, which we know offers improved outcomes and experiences.
Any other questions? Counselor Cookett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and for you too, Deanna. And first of all, to follow up on Deputy Warden Ketchabos' comments concerning the independent doctors. Comment first, certainly the Ontario Health Team has, has taken over and done a great deal more work than the old lins and the Ontario Health Team was established in part to kind of provide better service in the lins and, for whatever reasons you have done so. That's great, and great presentation. I'm curious about where the outside physicians fit into the hub-and-spoke model, if at all. Because if you look at, if we're looking at a resident's journey through the system, if you have somebody that has an independent doctor and needs- if you have somebody that has an independent doctor and needs to have access and follow-up for a procedure, does the system allow independent doctors to use the navigation team, for example?
That would be exactly the goal, is that every physician would be able to access that navigation support. So they would be able to call the navigation team within one of those three neighbourhoods and say, hey, I've got this individual, I need a referral to an orthopaedic surgeon. And that navigation team would then do the legwork to identify, okay, what is the need? Where are the waiting lists? How can I make the referral? Do the paperwork, circle back to the physician to say, we've got this established, and you don't, the individual now has an appointment in, you know, March, and be able to make those follow-ups. So it takes that load off of the physician themselves, and also improves access to the individual accessing or looking for care. So yes, the goal would be to provide access across the board to those physicians. Part of it is making sure we are able to connect with all of those physicians, to show them the benefits of this type of a model.
Just to follow up, Mr. Warden, you said the goal is to provide this access. How far are you from that goal?
Sorry, we've made strides. The Elgin Community Health Hub, over the last 12 months, coming on 13, has been a very substantial success in showing us how we can improve access through this type of a model. And it has been allowing us to show the benefits to the physicians and also to people being served. So there are starting points. That Elgin Community Health Hub offers services to a respiratory therapist for people who have lung conditions, asthma, COPD, that type of thing. Just about six weeks ago, we opened that service app, not just to the people accessing the community health hub, but to every physician who doesn't have access to team-based care. So it will take us a little while to promote that and get people to kind of work through that model, but there are starting points. And I think the opportunity for us through this proposal is to say, we've already got a model established. We don't, we're ready to go. We are ready to implement. We don't have to do the establishment of this foundation. The model is there. We need these resources to make it equitable across the board. In having some conversations with other Ontario Health Teams across the, across the province, we're in a pretty good space. We just need to put that on paper to showcase the great work that the partnerships have in this community.
Councillor Whitner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through to Deanna. Deanna, the numbers you had, the 9,000 without a provider in Elgin, and the 20,000 with providers outside of Elgin, is that typical across the province, or are we hot?
What is unique about Elgin is that 20,000 number. So in terms of proportion of people who don't have access to a family physician, a nurse practitioner at all, we are, I would say, below the provincial average. There are lots of communities where the numbers are higher. And this is a critical piece for us in terms of that proposal, is being able to say, but look at all of these folks who don't have access to local care. And it's really important. So, for example, when we put our proposal in a couple of years ago, we did a review of our family physicians locally, and anyone, they were supporting anywhere from 9 to 14% of their rosters were for people living in Timmins, Sudbury, Hamilton. And we know the same is happening elsewhere. And so that's a lot of capacity that we just need to think about ways to facilitate some of those transitions. The other piece for us is, you know, the community has done such a great job in recruiting industry to the region, Amazon, electric vehicle plants, or plant, and we know there are lots of folks coming here, whether for work or to retire. And this is where it's critical for us to work together from a municipality perspective, is also being able to say, how do we connect that to primary care? So PowerCo, for example, has been making lots of phone calls to our family, local family physicians, saying, we've got people in, coming in, can you connect them? That's a lot of time for those family physicians trying to field those calls in the offices, but how do we do that in a more connected way? How do we partner with some of those industries coming in to think about this hub and spoke model, and what they can maybe do to help us connect folks to primary care? And I think this is where, you know, when we think about those central hubs or those spoke sites, there's a real opportunity for us to advocate collectively around some of those public-private partnerships to ensure that healthcare is included in part of those conversations.
Councillor Song, go ahead.
Thank you. We go to conferences and the premier talks about how more people move to Ontario than Florida and Texas combined. In 2024, the number they use is between 800,000 and a million. The average family doc has 1,000 patients. That's 1,000 a year. So that's 1,000 doctors needed. The average, we've got capacity right now for family medicine, it's up from 754 spots. So that's with the increase. Okay, so we don't have enough to even cover the 2024. So a couple of questions. One, I'm glad you talked about nurse practitioners, because I believe personally, and I'm not an expert like you are, that the days of who's my family doctor are over. Secondly, I wanted to ask you your thoughts on how artificial intelligence will play a role in this, because, A, I commend you for saying nurse practitioner. I've looked online and used an online site, and all I dealt with was a nurse practitioner. And, you know, it reminds me of the days of, you know, every single delivery had to be an obstetrician-gynecologist, but there's a tremendous role for midwives, midwifery, I think it's right. So, I mean, when I go to see my physician, and I can't get in right now, for those of you know, my right hand has got some problems. But anyway, why are we not looking at how artificial intelligence can help this situation? Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you for...
Yeah, great, great points, and you're absolutely right. It is critical that what we don't do is think about more of the same. More of the same, the existing model is not the way to go. We have to rethink things in a different model of care, and that's exactly what we are proposing. And that's why we started with a visioning exercise around what could this look like? And so, access to team-based care, better leveraging nurse practitioners. Recently, just in the last couple of weeks, there was another provincial announcement around expanded scope of pharmacists, physiotherapists, other practitioners. So it is leveraging the system and the capacity that we do have to build a better model and more equitable access. As Warden Jones articulated, there's been great success in recruiting physicians to Elgin. I actually don't know that we need a whole bunch more physicians. But if we practise a little bit differently, if we think a little bit differently, if we better access the nurse practitioners at the Elgin Community Health Hub, at the central CHC, at West Elgin and East Elgin, and increase those team-based supports, we may have what we need to allow physicians to roster 1,400 people because they have access to team-based care rather than 1,000. And that would be the actual goal. So when I mentioned, for example, the number that the province is targeting is, okay, if you bring in a team-based support, you need to attach 225 more people. That's what we're looking at, is not asking for a whole bunch of new physicians to take on thousands of new patients, but it is, how do we give those team-based resources to allow us to practise a little bit differently? And AI, yes, critical component. Part of it is this digital infrastructure that we want to leverage and use. Part of our planning is around, okay, we've just, the model actually just got approved by our leadership team, the County Council, last Thursday, and now what we need to do is prioritise the components of the model that will allow us to move forward. And so when we think about a centralised waiting list, when we think about coordinated after-hours care, those are some of the pieces where we'll be loving digital technologies, including AI, to figure out what are those next steps. So, you know, if, for example, the hubs had access to online appointment booking for all physicians in the region, and there was an AI module that allowed us to be able to say, okay, this person is calling after-hours care, they need to be connected to their family physician on Monday, they don't need care right now, we can, that after-hours team could help book in wherever that person is needed. Or maybe it coordinates to whatever access to team-based support is required. So that's part of the next step in the journey, is figuring those out. I'm also pleased to say we've got a new data and digital lead that will be starting as part of our staff team on October 20th, which has been a bit of a gap for us.
I'd like to highlight that some of the incentive that we give the new doctors coming in is being used for AI for their reports, so free of paperwork for each doctor, which should give them more ability to use, bring more patients in. It's exciting times. Any other questions? councillor Hans, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. Thank you, Deanna, for that presentation. This Thursday evening, we are hosting a town hall in conjunction with West Elgin Community Health Centre, just to bring some of the health issues to the forefront in my community. And I'm convinced that this vision can solve some of the problems in Dunton Dunwich, as our healthcare is unsustainable. And I have a question. In your busy schedule, would you be able to find the time to bring this presentation to my community? Because it is a mindset that we have to change with our council and with our people in Dunton Dunwich.
Thanks so much. I'll actually be there on Thursday night. So, yeah, I think I'll be sitting at the health table, which I did in Rodney last week, but if there's an opportunity for five minutes to present at the front end, that would be fine. Certainly, we're well-connected with Andy and the team at Wellstall Elgin Community Centre along with this vision, so.
Okay, if there's nothing else, oh, okay.
Just waiting for a while.
Better roll this through.
Deanna, just to confirm, that the ultimate vision, at the end of the day, and with working with the other Ontario Health Teams, the navigation systems are going to be integrated or working together? A physician that's outside of Elgin County, but if I need something, service that's here, it'd be nice to know that that navigation system can interact with Elgin's navigation system to get what I need.
Yes, that's the goal. Part of the challenge around, you know, for example, moving from a local health integration network to the more localised Ontario Health Team, it's great for local planning, it does do some disconnection with some of those regional, provincial, digital navigation thing, aspects that are a bit more challenging. So there's lots of work happening regionally, provincially in that space as well. I do want to articulate that our goal would be, you would have immediate access to the team-based services, even though your physician is out of the region, you could access the team-based supports locally. But we have lots of work to do and are connecting with our other Ontario Health Team partners around those navigation supports. So yes, that would be the vision.
Okay, there's nothing further. Thanks so much for coming in, Deanna. Exciting times. It's looking much more promising than it did five years ago, that's for sure. We have resolution.
Resolved that the presentation from the executive director of the Elgin-Ontario Health Team be received and filed.
Move over in a second, please. Councillor Noble and councillor Cookett, all in favour? Motion carries. Thank you, Deanna. Down to 6.2, we have Kerry Hurd, CEO of Municipal Centre Elgin, and Mary Lou Tanner, Senior Planner of NPG Planning Solutions Regarding the Hospital Land Policy. Welcome, Kerry.
Good morning, Warden Jones and members of council. Thank you very much for having me this morning. My name is Kerry Hurd, and I'm the Chief Administrative Officer for Central Elgin. The purpose of today is to keep you informed of the progress that the municipality is making on the hospital lands, the redevelopment of that land. As you know, the provincial approval was granted to the county of the official plan earlier this year, and we are busy doing our work in order to redevelop the land and get our planning framework in place. As you are the body that holds the final approval for official plan amendments, your continued awareness and insight to our project is really important, and that's the purpose of me and Mary Lou being here today. We believe that this is an amazing opportunity for the community, and with the policy directions being just approved by our council in September, this is creating the foundation of our complete community. This will accommodate over 2,500 homes and potentially 7,000 to 9,000 new residents. The development is key to helping them to meet the urgent housing needs in the area as a result of the PowerCo battery plant. I am pleased to let you know that a robust engagement process has begun. We're excited to let you know that over, I believe about 150 people attended in person last week, and we received about 300 online comments in already to date about the project. The community input is crucial to creating the framework for the new community. We look forward to working with you completely, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Mary Lou Tanner, our planner for NPG Planning Solutions, to walk you through the policy directions.
Thank you very much, Kerry, and good morning, Warden Jones and members of County Council. It's my pleasure to be here with you today to provide an overview of the work to date and some of the next steps, immediate next steps and next steps into 2026. We can go to the next slide, please. This is an air photo of the Central Elgin Hospital lands. I'm sure you're well aware of their location across the street from this building, but for members of the community watching online, it is located generally north-east of Sunset and John Wise Line. It is approximately 470 acres, including the existing vacant hospital buildings that are on the site. Next slide, please. We're here today because we have been advancing a significant amount of work regarding the redevelopment of the hospital lands. The majority of the lands are vacant, they were the agricultural farm that was part of the former hospital. It is a transformative opportunity, given the growth that is coming to this part of Ontario, and it is also an opportunity to address much-needed provision of additional housing. We started earlier this year with a vision and guiding principles workshop with Central Elgin Council, and that was adopted by council in March of this year. Based on that vision and guiding principles, which I'll touch on in a little bit, we have been preparing what we call the policy directions to set the broad framework and draft land use plan for the redevelopment of the lands, and that is what we have released to date. That was the basis of last week's open house, which was in this room, and it was lined up out the door. It was wonderful to see such interest in the project, and as well, the online feedback opportunities that we have. In addition, there will be stakeholder workshops throughout the month of October with key stakeholders on a variety of topics. We'll go to the next slide, please. So a bit of the process outline, as I mentioned, we had the vision workshop and the technical background work that we've been doing. We have been working in partnership with Infrastructure Ontario, who did a number of background studies, such as natural heritage and archaeology and transportation, as well as county staff, Matt Vaughan and Peter Duchek. And I certainly do want to acknowledge the partnership that we've had with county staff and their critical availability and their technical input. It has been really a wonderful partnership, and we look forward to continuing that. The policy directions and land use plan have been informed by all of that Infrastructure Ontario work, as well as reviewed by county staff to provide their feedback, and their feedback has been incorporated. And we're in this period to the end of this year where we were undertaking consultation on the documents, the proposed land use plan. And starting in January of next year, we'll draft the official plan amendment to Central Elgin's official plan with targeted adoption in March, and then forwarding it to the county for a decision to approve the official plan amendment, working again in partnership throughout these next steps. We'll go to the next slide, please. The vision for the hospital lands, as Kerry mentioned, is a complete community, providing both jobs and housing and providing a mix of housing. Complete communities address four key principles. First, that it is a distinctive community in and of itself, and that the lands are developed to provide the full range of both jobs and housing. Second, that it is connected. If you recall the air photo, there are a number of Arturion County roads that surround the site. We have developed an internal road pattern to connect the lands to the north in the city of St. Thomas, as well as provide appropriate connections to the county road system. The importance of trails and walkability has been reiterated to us by members of the community, both in the online feedback we've received, as well as in the open house last week. It was something that was mentioned over and over and over again. In addition, the proposed land use densities, as well as the internal road layout, will support potential future transit service, building transit supportive land use densities and providing the ability for transit to move into the community and connect to the county road system as well. We are proposing land use densities and a mix of housing to provide a full range of low-density, medium-density and high-density housing. This does provide opportunities for people throughout their life cycle, whether you're parents with young children or in a sandwich generation with elderly parents and children, hopefully moving out of your house as they join the workforce, there will be housing opportunities for all. It is also about making... It is also about making sure that we are supporting affordability and making space for affordable housing, and that certainly came up from a number of people last week in the open house. And finally, sustainability, making sure we're managing stormwater, managing new parks and providing those broadly throughout the community, so people have the ability not just to move throughout the community in cars, but also walk and cycle, as well as providing opportunities to ensure that we're managing with the increased frequency of rainwater that we see with stormwater ponds and protecting natural heritage features throughout the property. We'll move to the next slide, please. So this is the draft land use plan, and I want to start by saying there has been no decision on whether the hospital buildings will stay or go. That is work that is ongoing by the Province of Ontario, who currently owns the lands. This plan works if the buildings stay, it works if the buildings go. But we made the decision to show an entire proposed redevelopment plan, so people could see where the road connections would be and where the land uses would be. So we're going to start at the left edge on Sunset and move towards Fairview, and we'll stay north of John Wise Line. We have identified in orange, you can see medium-density housing, that would be up to six stories. It would be surface parking, generally. That model of housing in this community really doesn't support underground parking, but it's also not needed. So it would be surface parking, and it could be anything from stacked townhouses to apartment buildings, it could be both rental and ownership. Right at the northeast corner of John Wise and Sunset, we've identified future institutional lands. These are lands that the province has requested. We identify on the plan of about 40 acres for future institutional uses. There's been a lot of conversation about a potential hospital. I will say there's been no decision or communication from the province about that, but it could be some of the healthcare services that we just heard about, it could be long-term care homes, it could be an ambulatory center, as was discussed by the last presenter, up to something such as a hospital if that decision is made by the province. The darker green, just as we continue to move east, is a stormwater pond. You can see that there's a creek that goes in that area, and that provides natural connectivity to outlet the stormwater pond and a park. As we move further east, the yellow lands are lower-density residential developments. So they are single-family homes, semi-detached, and generally a rowhouse type or townhouse type of development. There are parks within the vicinity of the yellow areas that are touching up against the city of St. Thomas, and there is a road that connects from Benjamin Parkway into these lands. But it only goes a certain distance, and then it stops, and you either have to turn right or left. It doesn't connect all the way to John Wise Line. That was a conscious decision to avoid creating a speedway from that community to John Wise Line. The road design will be done so that it is narrower than Benjamin Parkway, it will also provide the ability for people to walk to the park and provide driveway access onto that particular road. All of those elements help slow the traffic down, which is a key goal, because there is an existing community to the north. As we look south of what we call that east-west collector that goes out to Sunset, we see a couple of things. First, more mixed-use housing, which is the orange, and then in the orangey-red is what we call the downtown main street. This was a very important principle for Central Elgin Council, and we've heard really positive feedback from members of the community. They want a walkable downtown in this community, they want to be able to walk to stores and shops and services and doctors' offices and dentist's office. They do not want to see big box plazas or things that you would see, like with a large Home Depot or something like that. And so we have created that in the center of the plan. It is accessible to people from all parts of this community, as well as from the community to the north. You certainly would be able to drive to it, you would be able to take transit when transit's available, but you would also be able to walk and bike to it as well. As we start to move further south towards John Wise Line, I just want to highlight a couple of key things. The dark purple in the middle of the land use plan at John Wise, that is higher-density housing, it would be about eight stories, again with surface parking, it's not going to be anything more than that. It's not needed in this community, and quite honestly, it wouldn't really fit in this community. The turquoisey blue to the west is a site for school and potentially a community center. We've heard an awful lot about the importance of community centers from members of the community, whether it's a swimming pool or community services that include things like libraries, a walking track, gyms for indoor activity, as well as space for outdoor activities. And as we start to move further east, we can see that there is a large park, that would be the large community park to provide things like soccer fields and baseball diamonds, and just that space that those activities need. More lower-density residential, and then just up in the very northeast corner, we have another stormwater pond. I do want to touch on the northeast area, there is a newly identified provincially significant wetland there that will be protected. In addition, the archaeological studies have identified some indigenous archaeological findings in that area, so that archaeological site will be protected, it will not be developed, and it will have limited access as well. There is a second archaeological site, it is just a bit south of that larger one that I just talked about. It is more European archaeology, there is some indigenous archaeology there as well. It too will be protected from development. And finally, there are a couple of sites that have the potential, within the high-density and one of the park areas, they do have some archaeological finds that can be resolved, but until those are resolved, those areas will be protected as well. We'll move to the next slide, please. So let me just turn to some of the key policies that are important in implementing this plan. The first is that we are providing a mix of housing in low, medium, and high density. This is going to be somewhat more dense than has been seen typically in this community. This is going to allow these housing opportunities to move forward, and it's going to contribute to addressing affordability. Density is one of the opportunities municipalities have to address affordability. But this is within the Central Elgin context, as I mentioned earlier, not looking at things that you would see in London or Hamilton or further into the GTA. This is in the Central Elgin context, maximum eight stories in height. We would include a range of tenure options, that includes rental, ownership cooperatives, as well as other types of housing that people may choose, including tiny homes, requiring additional residential units to be roughed in as part of the construction, the new units, the homeowner can choose to build it or not. But in creating that opportunity for the homeowner, if they don't choose to do it when the home is built, they certainly have the ability to build it at a later point in time, and just having the rough-ins makes it more affordable to do so. We also want to make sure that we are locating the higher-density housing, and particularly the high-density designations along collector arterial roads and adjacent to those roads to provide good access. And we have also provided access for people throughout the community to parks, schools, and the community center. The land use plan has some circles on it, and that is a 15-minute walk radius from each park, and every portion of the community will be able to walk to a park within 15 minutes. We'll go to the next slide, please. I mentioned the downtown main street earlier. This is going to be a walkable community with services, commercial services at the ground level and housing above it to generally three to six stories in height. There will be parking on the streets in front and good-sized sidewalks, landscaping, all of those things that make those spaces really attractive and support the commercial businesses that are investing in the community. There was, as I mentioned, a lot of support for this, both through the online survey as well as at the open house last week. People really want to be able to walk to services, they want to see these services in their local communities. We've identified Sunset as the future institutional corridor, there are existing institutional uses on both sides of Sunset. It is a county road, and it does provide the ability to have that institutional use that we identified at the northeast corner of Sunset and John Wise. Providing that institutional use with access to two arterial roads and a potential future collector road really maximizes the opportunity for site design in that 40-acre block. We'll move to the next slide, please. We have provided a range of parks, there are three parks in a range of size, from the smaller one-hectare park to a larger four-hectare park. This provides the ability to provide a range of services, it also provides the ability, given their location, for people to walk to it, and it will provide both active and passive recreational facilities. And we hope that there will be small-scale services as well, such as cafes, vendors, kiosks, and things like that. The Natural Heritage System Network was done by the Province of Ontario to update the natural heritage mapping. The two key changes are the extension of the creek that comes off of Sunset, just north of the southwest center for forensic mental health, and carries eastward and then goes southeast, and the new provincially significant wetland that I mentioned over closer to Fairview. And through this more detailed environmental study will be required as the plan moves forward to implementation. There has been significant cultural heritage work and archaeological work, both cultural heritage on the existing buildings and the landscape of the hospital buildings, as well as archaeological work. The plan protects the archaeological resources. There are two areas that will not be developed because of what the findings are. Other archaeological areas may have the opportunity to develop, but further study is absolutely required. And updating the heritage designation by law for the hospital site is needed. It was done many years ago and doesn't line up with the current requirements of the Province of Ontario for heritage designation. None of this is a showstopper, it is managing through future processes, but the two areas identified on the plan as archaeological sites will not be developed. We'll go to the next slide, please. And this is the last slide. So as I mentioned earlier, the next steps, we are finalizing the land use and policy directions. We are in a period of fairly heavy engagement with the community, with stakeholders, this council, with Central Elgin Council, and continued engagement with county staff, as well as the province, to gather all of that feedback and ensure that we're being responsive to what we've heard and making revisions as appropriate. We will be preparing the official plan amendment and undertaking further consultation on that in 2026, in the first quarter of 2026, likely replicating what we've done so far, which is an open house, there will definitely be a public meeting, stakeholder engagement, and continued conversation with the province, as well as the agencies and county staff. Our goal is a decision by Central Elgin Council towards the end of March, so we can submit everything to the county for their review and approval through their process. I just want to conclude by saying thank you very much for your time today. I also really do want to reiterate the strong partnership with county staff. When we have had questions, they have been accessible, like right away, and have worked very collaboratively with us on some of the key technical elements, and it is very, very much appreciated, and we look forward to that continued partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I hope you can stick around for about 15 minutes, because we have a flag raising that we're late for already, so I'm going to recess, and hopefully we can continue this conversation when we get back.
It would be my pleasure, yes.
We'll take a recess. Thank you for the break, and we'll come back to order now. So we're down to questions for Mary Lou. Any questions at this time? Oh, please, somebody have a question. Go ahead, Counselor Sloan.
Thank you through your warden to Mary Lou. I just wanted to, you brought us to, took us to, some of us down to Niagara on the Lake to see what I would refer to as a planned community. And what I found very interesting about that, and I wondered if you could just maybe speak to this, is that the parking was behind the residences, and the streets were narrower. And it had kind of, like, it felt a little bit like it might have been on The Truman Show, it was like a perfect small community, perfect community with a walkable bank and places like that. Would it be okay, or if you sort of maybe highlighted some of these opportunities for a new community, like integrated road systems, things like that, and maybe use the Niagara on the Lake model? Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Sloan. The community is called Garrison Village. If you are entering towards Old Town in Niagara on the Lake, Jackson Triggs Winery is on the right, it's across the street. And it is a mixed-use community, so the residential was built first. It does include a mix of housing densities, it is all in the lower-density range, though it's singles, semis, and row houses. The parking is at the rear, so the houses face the street, and then you've got sidewalks, and it's connected to a trail system, as this community will be as well. Some of the areas of this community where it just doesn't make sense to have multiple driveways onto a collector road, the access will be at the rear, and that is the lower-density areas. What it does is, it really prioritizes people on the streets, whether you're walking, cycling, you know, taking the dog for a walk, or going out with your grandchildren or your elderly parents, you have a safe environment to move through the community. The commercial area is currently under construction, it too is easily accessible through mostly streets. There are some trails that do provide access to it, and it has a broad network of open space areas and parks, like we have shown here. One of the interesting things that that developer chose to do was the stormwater retention is actually underneath the park. So it is a tank, and it discharges appropriately to the receiving water body. We have identified stormwater ponds because of some of the natural heritage features that are in proximity to where the stormwater ponds are going to be. But stormwater ponds now are much better designed, so they look more naturalized and more part of the open space landscape. And I think that, you know, the other thing that we are really working on here is making sure that the scale of that downtown main street is really appropriate for this size and this type of community, and that we are prioritizing that stores will have doors and windows on the street, you will be able to walk down that street, see the businesses, know what's going on, and it is the eye connection to the door that's going to draw you into the business. That is a very important principle of that, designing that type of commercial area, all of which is being done in the commercial area of this development, which is now called Clayfield Commons, and the residential part is called Garrison Village. I really encourage you, if you're in that part of Ontario, to just take 10, 15 minutes and walk around, and you'll see some of the important design principles about connectivity, location of parks, so people can walk to parks, incorporating natural areas as well as trails, and then just ensuring that the scale of the community is appropriate. The hotel that's been being built in Clayfield Commons is four stories, it's not a tall hotel by any stretch of the imagination. There is also a grocery store going in there, because there's now enough population to support a successful grocery store. It won't be a big box, 100,000 square feet, it'll be about 40,000 square feet, which is about the size of grocery store that would be in this community as well. There are a number of key elements from that Niagara on the Lake example that are highly translatable to this community and what we've done here.
Hey, any other questions or comments? Counselor Sloan, Noble, go ahead.
Through your warden, I'd like to highlight how well-attended that event was last week that we had that open house. It had over 150 attendance, so I think it speaks to the fact that it was very intriguing to the community and something they're looking forward to.
Resolved that the presentation from the Chief Administrative Officer of the Municipality of Central Elgin and the Senior Partner of NPG Planning Solutions be received and filed.
Move over a second, please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Jager, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you for coming in. Going down to item seven, motion to adopt recommendations from Committee of the Whole. Is there anything anybody wants to pull out and speak to? If not, we have resolution, please.
Resolved that items CW2566 to CW2573 from the Committee of the Whole meeting dated September 23, 2025, and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Move over a second, please. Counselor Latham, Counselor Jager, all in favor? Motion carries. Down to eight, 8.1, Human Resources Committee, October 7. That's just for information, that's right. Okay, moving. Go ahead.
We don't even receive these for information? How do you close it off the agenda?
They, sorry, Mr. Warden threw you to the deputy warden. These minutes are just simply for council to read and be aware of, they have not been yet adopted at their own committee, and some of them may not be adopted at their own committee for several months. So it was decided when we changed our procedures that we would put them on the agenda for, just to be read only, so that we weren't bringing them back to council for, to read six months after a committee meeting. So they're only for information purposes.
There's nothing else on that one, move down to nine. 9.1, my report, activity report for September, any questions there? Another busy month. Not, we'll move down to... Not, we'll move down to Council Correspondents. We have several, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Resolved that the report titled Warden's Activity Report, September 2025, from Warden Jones, dated October 14th, 2025, be received and filed.
Move her to second, please. Counselor Hans, Counselor Whitner, all in favor? Motion carries. Moving down to Council Correspondents, you have several there. Anything anybody wants to highlight? Counselor Whitner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. It's item 10.6 Township of Woolwich, Bill C 61 First Nations Clean Water Act. I think it's high time that everybody had clean access, access to clean drinking water, and I think something more needs to be done, so I'd like to endorse that.
You'd like to move support? Second, or for that, oh, go ahead, Catherine.
Resolved that the Corporation of the County of Elgin support the resolution from the Council of the Township of Woolwich regarding Bill C 61 First Nations Clean Water Act.
Whitner moves, second, or Counselor Hans, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Anything else to highlight there? Any comments on your side from 10.4 for the low-risk incident referrals? It's a plane, or? I think a lot of us are doing that already, but anyway. Okay. If there's nothing else, receive and file the rest.
Resolved that Correspondents, items 10.1 to 10.5 and 10.7 be received and filed.
Move her to second, please. Counselor Latham, Counselor Whitner, all in favor? Motion carries. Down to 11, statements and queries of members? Seeing none, next closed meeting item. Better did that, we're good there. Consideration bylaws.
Bylaw number 2534, Ron McNeil Line Speed Zone Amendment, being a bylaw to amend the schedule to bylaw number 2419, being a bylaw to authorize speed limits. Resolved that bylaw number 2534 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Move her to second, please. Counselor Noble, Debbie Warren Ketchum, all in favor? Motion carries.
Bylaw number 2535, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the October 14th, 2025 meeting. Resolved that bylaw number 2535 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Move her to second, please. Counselor Hans, Counselor Latham, all in favor? Motion carries. And adjournment.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 10:43 a.m. to meet again on October 28th, 2025, at 9 o'clock a.m.
Move her to second, Counselor Whitner, Counselor Sloan, all in favor? Motion carries.